Members of the board, you ready?
Yeah.
You're ready? Good evening, it is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. And I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome those who are participating in the Board of Education meeting in person and those watching the meeting via live streaming on YouTube. We would ask that anyone addressing the board to please use the microphone at the podium and to identify themselves for the record. As a reminder, the link to this meeting is on the district webpage under Board of Education. The streaming will run through the end of the meeting. In the event there is a disruption in the streaming, I will pause the meeting until it is reestablished. We have a full quorum tonight, all five board members, and I would like to welcome Mr. Frank A. Otero, who was sworn in about thirty minutes ago. He is representing single-member district number one. So welcome, Mr. Otero as part of the board.
Thank you.
We have no members participating via teleconference. All members are in person. And so I appreciate everybody being in attendance. We have, we are on item B. I would like to welcome Mr. Otero's granddaughter. She is going to be leading us in the pledge. So if you would stand with me, please.
I'm from the United States of America and she would be called the British Union. My nation, I forgot any of this law, but they're living in a just to throw.
Thank you very much. We're on item C, announcement of meeting. Mrs. Chavis, would you please announce the meeting?
This meeting has been announced in accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act and the Los Angeles Schools Open Meetings Resolution and is a legally constituted meeting of the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education.
Thank you very much. We're on item D, approval of the agenda. Mrs. Chavis, are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
I do not have any changes or deletions to the agenda.
I do. I would like to ask for consideration, please, to remove items M and N. I jumped the gun. We are talking about those tomorrow during our board retreat. So I would like, I will place those on the next meeting. So M and N, I would like to remove from tonight's agenda. Any other board members have any other deletions or changes they would like to call out? I would stand for a motion regarding the approval of the amended agenda.
We need a motion to, for point of order. Do we need a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes. Um, and the support of screen that Chavis, actually, um, Chavis would do much for it. So maybe just go to a straight motion, and then you can say, I move to amend the agenda to remove M and N. All right, that's what we do.
Okay. I will make the motion. I move to amend the agenda, removing items M and N.
Thank you.
I have moved, and Mr. Bennett has seconded to amend the agenda, removing items M and N. Is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes by zero. We are on item E, public comment. Do we have any persons for public comment this evening?
We do not have any individuals who would like to provide a public comment this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We are now on item F, approval of the consent items. I would stand for a motion regarding the consent items.
Madam President.
Mrs. Simoia.
I move we approve the consent items, the exception of item K, approval of resolution twenty-five dash zero zero three, the LLS District Foundation. This was tabled on May twentieth in our regular board meeting.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion?
Oh, who's second's motion?
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Mrs. Simoia has moved, and Mr. Bennett has seconded to approve the consent items with the exception of item K, which is the approval of resolution number two-five-zero-zero-three, Los Angeles Schools District Foundation, which was tabled at the May twentieth, twenty-five regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? I will call, or for the benefit of the audience, consent items are the action items on the agenda presented by the superintendent and staff for approval. All agenda items have been reviewed by the board members individually. If no discussion has been asked regarding those items by any of the board members, the action items may be submitted for approval with one motion or vote. The actions that are not consented will be discussed prior to action being taken. Is there any discussion? I will call for the vote. Mrs. Simoia?
I vote yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes by zero. We are now on item H, which is the Acting Superintendent of Schools Report. Mrs. Chavis, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Osowski, I would like to ask Ms. Tracy to prepare, come to the podium to provide her presentations for this evening.
Hey, Madam President, members of the board, Acting Superintendent Chavis. So today I have the management, the construction report, and which is much more exciting than the one I usually do. What's up? The first thing we have are some upcoming projects that we have. The first we have on Boski Farms Elementary. We have a roof coating and stucco to be started, starting. That project is kind of their two different vendors. However, they kind of go hand in hand because of the construction of, to fix the stucco, uh, some roofing also had to be completed. That is going to be starting, and also the parent drop-off and pickup lane is going to be added. That is all happening, and those three projects are slated to be completed prior to school starting, depending on the weather. And then the other upcoming project we have is the West Side Transportation Propane Tank Installation, along with the canopy. That is in the process. No specific date do we have on that one right now, so the planning is on for that. And then the annual wood gym floor maintenance is, is on. And that will be for any wood floors and gyms, and that will close down the gym for a week. But it's, gives the workers two days to work on it and three days to cure. Next, we have the Peralta Elementary Construction. And that is completing, um, final finishes and punch list items. So it is getting very close. We continue to work towards the move-in date for July first. And the demolition has begun on some of the structures, buildings in for this month, so they're ongoing. Next, we have the playground equipment. I don't know, I'm sure you recall the large purchases we made for each school site is receiving something. And the playground equipment is all here. However, they are installing like one, one school site at a time, and the Desert View and Parish and Boski Farms have been complete. So there's some of the pictures of things that have been installed. And then there is the East Side Transportation Canopy. There's a picture of that also completed. And I believe that is the last wide. Yes. So are there any questions on constructions?
Members of the board, any questions? Bennett, is there a problem?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Simoia? Absolutely. I do have a question, well, more of a comment and, and a request like that. Um, it's been a while since we got a tour of Peralta Elementary, and in light of Mr. Otero joining the board, I think it only be fitting, gentlemen from that community, be very interested in seeing the inside of that facility. Um, so if we could schedule one sooner rather than when the teachers start moving in, I know they're going to be moving their stuff in.
Right.
If we could get some dates, I think that would be a wonderful opportunity, so.
That sounds good. Wouldn't mind that myself.
Oh, so I, yeah, so I'm curious about the mural in the gym specifically. We were told all about it, and apparently this is going to be a showcase, so we need to see this. We've, I'm very interested in seeing the mural in the gym that was built.
I haven't seen it in person.
I, yeah.
The pictures are gorgeous.
That is, so I'm kind of looking.
I'm amazed at, it looks, it is so good, and I do believe that Tiffany did want to have something. She's not available tonight, but I do believe she wants to do something about the mirror.
Yes, Mr. Otero?
Uh, I just want to make one comment regarding the profit project. You know, this has been a long time in coming. We, we got the funds, I don't know what year, you know, we got the funds for that. It was
Twenty seventeen.
It was quite a long time ago, and you know, it went through COVID and went through inflation and what have you. And I've been observing as when I, whenever I drive up in Peralta, but it's been a long time coming, and it's good to see that it's, I guess, not nearing completion, but getting close. And, you know, there was a lot of controversy with the old buildings and, and the size of the property and what have you, but it's, it's, it's good to see. Over the years, I've been real proud of what Los Angeles Schools have been able to do with projects, you know, whether Valencia High School or Los Angeles High School or, or, you know, other schools that, you know, I think that our community is growing and, you know, and so I guess I'm just anxious to see what, what the needs are for in the coming years, but thank you.
You bet. Well, I think you'll be really impressed with this building. It, it was impressive when it was a construction zone. So, and, and what the plans were for the property, given the shape of the property and some of the other constraints, it's just been really joyful to watch. So I think you're going to be really impressed. So if they've done, the staff and our vendor has, our contractor has just done an outstanding job. So, um, I have a question. I'm a shopper. We talked about demolition this beginning. What parts are being demolished?
There are some, what, some portable? Portables on the east end of the campus, so they're starting on the far east end, and then they're moving west. So there was a portable that used to house the pre-K students, and then there's what was there when I was the teacher there, the kindergarten. It was a portable that looked like an actual building, so those are going to come down first because that's where the new student pickup and drop-off and pickup is going to be. Okay, so we have to finish that. And what was the old playground that was parallel to the ditch bank?
Yeah.
So that's now the drive-up force, drop-off and pickup. So our students will have a temporary playground because the current structures that are on the campus will need to be demolished before we can put the permanent playground.
Now, will the, the admin office, the old admin office, will that also be demolished eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
That will be probably one of the last buildings to come down, I believe, because right now that's housing the majority of the boxes.
Okay. And the move-in, will that, will that start with any particular grades? Or is it just we open the doors to the teachers and say, go forth and move in and get comfy?
So starting next week, actually, at the end of this week, we're starting to move in some of the technology, like the interactive flat panels. And then next week, we'll start moving those classrooms, the furniture in there. I think all the new furniture is in. Is that accurate information, Sandy? Okay, so all the new furniture will come in, and then all the classroom belongings that the teachers have boxed up since the end of last month, so that will come in. We will open with kindergarten through sixth grade on August fourth and fifth, depending on the grade. So Kinder will start on the fifth. We will also open with two of our pre-K programs. The DD pre-K program from Boski Farms will start at Peralta, and the Peralta pre-K program will also open. And then the remainder of our pre-K programs will join the school in January. The reason for the delay, we do not have their pickup or the drop-off and pickup area complete. If you look at, and I think it's one of the I believe that's on there, but if you look at the front entrance and I don't see the picture of it. There is where the current portable is for Bradbury for our contractor. That's where the pre-K pickup and drop-off and pickup is going to be. So
Oh, that building, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So that will have to come last. So currently, if you think of the current Peralta Elementary, where the current pickup drop-off is with the horseshoe?
Yeah.
Where the parents are, that has to all be reconfigured for pre-K and for parking for the front of the school. So that has to come after the existing main building that was built in two thousand and three comes down.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
We're, we're landlocked.
Yes, it's tight, it's a tight fit. Did we get the rest of the, I think we were talking about a recycled art piece going with the corridor between the cafeteria and the gym? We were waiting on one more to be completed by a former art teacher. Has that been completed and is it ready to go?
They're in the process of working on it. I think what was in the right outside of the library, so there was some ceiling tile. So there's, there's a number of art projects that are going to be incorporated within the new school. So one of the big ones is the sunflower mural. When you see, when you walk into the current Peralta building, that is now going to be incorporated, and you can see where it's going to be located somewhat. So there's a staircase on the second picture to, from your left. But it's a staircase, that's not the actual staircase. The staircase is coming out of the library cafeteria. That's going to be a sunflower type mural. That's going to be glass, like a stained glass.
Right.
And then we will have another mural that was in the original main building.
Okay, and so that one will come over as well?
That will come over, but it's not going to be painted. It's going to be a replication.
Right, okay. And then the back patio, the one that's facing, facing east, I think that was going to come off of, is that right there?
That is, that's the cafeteria.
That's off of cafeteria, okay.
So that will be another seating area for our students.
Okay.
And that is facing east towards the ditch bank.
Right, and so that's, that's not part of the drive-through back there?
That is. So if you see the curve right there.
So that will be, so we'll have the fencing up?
Correct.
Okay, and will it be the little three-foot chain link, or are we doing something a little bit more glamorous? I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure on that one. We can find out, though.
Well, my thought is we've built a beautiful, beautiful building, and then we
We put chain link. Put some wrought iron and something nice.
Yes.
We can find out.
Okay, that would be lovely to know. Thank you very much for the report. You did great. And now for the most exciting report.
Yeah.
Those are like numbers. This is crazy.
We want to finish this one as soon as possible. Okay, so state of finances. So this has, again, the budget authority that we have on the OVMS that we can spend. And the next column, we have if there are any bars, and you had approved some of the bars that, so you can see the changes that will be made once those bars are approved. And then the next column has the amount spent or, or encumbered, and then giving you the remaining balance, and then the remaining balance and a percentage. And if you actually go through the list, anything with a higher percentage is something that will carry over. Will carry over or is, has a cash balance that will get, be able to post up those money. So, so they're ongoing accounts. Some, some of these funds do end at a certain time, and so those have smaller, smaller percentages on them, so. There is one oopsie on here, and that is on the school bus camera fund. It has ten thousand dollars, and it shows a hundred percent of it that actually is, is encumbered. We are waiting for those cameras that will be paid for, so it should actually be a zero.
Zero.
All ten thousand has been already encumbered. The purchase order was made quite a bit ago. So I apologize for that mistake. So I apologize for that mistake. But uh it kinda shows too, again, at the end where we were last month in a percentage remaining versus this month and so just a slight movement um in the remaining percentages, it went from thirty percent last month to twenty-nine percent left this month. Overall. And then in the operational revenue, you can see what we had budgeted each month, I kinda give you a detail of the different um places that had budgeted revenue for operational. And um you can see actually in each uh each of the categories up there, other than the S U G is to the penny, um because that is something you know for sure. Um at each one of those, more revenue came in than I budgeted for, so that is a good thing. So all of those numbers actually, so we received all the revenue that I budgeted for and uh an additional amount there. And so um next I have on the audit committee to report on that, we did meet audit committee about together on June twelfth. And we had previously discussed uh the which auditors we would what we wanted to do for um our normal regular annual audit. And the committee had decided we did want to stay with JAG unless there was a large price increase, which there was not. And so we did sign a contract with JAG to have them again as our annual audit auditor and that is scheduled for our entrance. Audit is on is going to be on July fifteenth at three thirty. And then they will go over um just um mentioning on the audit what they what we can expect and all, so it'll be a normal entrance. Is scheduled for that. Also, we had talked to our committee about a special audit services um stemming from a request from the uh Office of the State Auditor. And we had told them about that, that we currently have an active R F P going. And that is, we hope to bring a recommendation to the board on July eighth. To let you know um who they are recommending. And then once we um those services will not see, we'll have to wait for a um for a uh I forgot the time. Um in case protest period time, so that after after that will be uh I believe uh July uh twenty-third, the protest period will be over. And then once the auditor starts um sometime after the twenty-third, close to that they will have a hundred and twenty days to finish audit. And that is all I have to report on that. Um do you have any questions on finance or audit?
Mr. Vickers, any questions?
No, thank you for the report.
Mr. Bennett?
No, thank you for the report.
Mr. Otero?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Simoyah?
No, thank you. I have a couple, on Title One Part A. Um we have budget authority after the bars. We dropped by a million dollars on Title One Part A.
Correct, so that is something um we had already expected to happen. We knew that our um as a matter of fact, on some of these stated finances, I had actually put the true amount, so you could get a better idea of the remaining balance on there. We have been expecting that to happen, but we needed to wait for something official to come in. Um when carryover was first estimated, you know, if you think about the time that we did the budget versus July first, a lot of things happened and initially um Title One was going to be purchasing uh a math program. Uh I excuse me, um E S R funds were going to be purchasing a math program. And then um Title One was concerned about possibly having too much carryover. So we decided that Title One would purchase that math program because yeah, there is um it's limited what you can do with Title One and we knew that E S R funds were going to be um we we're gonna have in this year, we're gonna have up to September to be able to spend E S R funds. So what we did was we did a trade-off and purchased some items, purchased those items with Title One funds. We purchased some other things that were some technology things that were gonna come out of E S R's out of Title One to bring down their carryover, just because the uh the carryover is not unlimited for Title One. If you leave anything more than fifteen percent of your award you will not get that portion of the carryover. So we did it to kind of conserve um conserve the the amounts. Um so what that did was initially, they had um they had a lot more carryover than ended up by June thirtieth. And so we needed to adjust the carryover in the in the budget approval because it was approved. And after a certain point, they don't let you change anything and so we needed to wait for an official document and it just finally came. So that bar is being completed, but we were aware about all at all times.
Math program did we purchase?
Pardon me?
What math program did we purchase?
Um what is that middle school?
Middle school math.
Yeah.
Mid-school math.
Mid-school math and there were also a lot of um some technology type of um like headphones and stuff for, you know, so there were also some, it wasn't just mid, but that was the largest portion of of that.
Is mid-school layer one, two, or three?
Layer one.
So that means it requires a curriculum?
Correct. Which we are working on.
So we purchased something without a curriculum and without board approval? On the
Didn't it come to the board?
We don't have a an approval from the board on the curriculum.
I don't, I I do believe it was, but I
We might have agreed to the purchase of the instructional materials.
Right, I don't remember when mid-school math, I don't remember what month it came.
Yeah, I remember the purchase of the instructional materials, but did we purchase that um as a comprehensive? So in other words, because it's layer one, we thought that mid-school math, we would just use its curriculum? Okay. Next question I have is on education for homeless children and youth grants, we had a decrease there of eleven thousand seven eighty-two, so twenty-two percent drop. That's two four one one three?
Yes, um I do not remember what that was due to, but that might have also been a carryover, because I think it's only
Was that carryover?
I think it was carryover.
I think it's, I believe thirty thousand is
It's the cap. That was carryover.
So the eleven thousand seven eighty-two was carryover and it and we weren't allowed to take all of that?
Correct, it was an adjustment on the carryover.
Alright, those are all of my questions, thank you, I always appreciate your reports, I know you don't think they're very exciting, but I find fascinating. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Trisak. Our summer school programs have concluded, tomorrow we are excited to celebrate our summer graduation for our high school students. They will be completing, that that were able to complete their program during this past month. So congratulations to our graduates, we will be celebrating them at Los Llanos High School for all three of our high schools tomorrow, midday. I would also like to extend a very heartfelt thank you to our team members, our district, including our students who really rose above and helped support with the emergency over the weekend, as well as staff members who were there to support. Our community truly came together to assist one another in our time of need. Thank you to our first responders and the multiple entities that worked tirelessly over the weekend and the last few days. Our thoughts and prayers are with the families who lost their homes. And we are very excited that we have rain, we hope that we do not have flooding now.
It's a little scary.
Yes. Our personnel office continues to recruit for our current open positions, we had a successful job fair earlier this month. And we have another job fair scheduled for Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, July first here at Central Office. That will focus on special education positions as well as athletic coach positions, so that'll be here in our building. Our departments are very busy preparing for the upcoming school year, the new fiscal year begins on July first, so happy new school year, it's around the corner. Thank you to our staff who are busily closing out the fiscal year and preparing to open the new fiscal year. This is that time of year where we're closing out one year and opening another one and preparing very quickly for our new year to come. Our offices will be closed on Friday, July fourth, for the Independence Day holiday. There will also be many school sites and departments closed on Thursday, July third, and we wish one, we wish everyone a very safe holiday. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Mrs. Chavis, can you tell us how many students will be graduating tomorrow?
I believe there will be seven.
Seven, awesome. And that represents the three high schools?
From my understanding, yes, it does.
That's awesome, and at the last personnel job fair, did we, did we hire anybody?
We sure did, I believe, Mr. Seis, we were able to offer a number of contracts.
We have yet to compile all of the results, but I will allow Mr. Aragon to kinda give a a summary, he was actively involved in in that and that ourselves, if you wanna.
Do you agree?
Yeah. Sorry, I called. No, it was a successful event, I I wanna thank you for for doing that and uh we're hoping for more of the same this week.
So Madam President, members of the Los Llanos School Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Chavis, thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about our most recent job fair, it was held at Los Llanos Middle School. Um and our focus was on support staff, uh we had all departments represented. Uh we did a few, I'd like to also acknowledge nutrition, they provided meals for all those in attendance uh supporting us. Uh Mr. Garcia parked the bus out out front of Los Llanos Middle School, which I think is a pretty common practice. Um we used marquee, uh used the marquee to advertise, also we had a Mr. Isaac Adameo, uh did some work for us to make sure that we got the information out early often and multiple modes was our was our theme, is we try to share the information. Uh felt like we had quite a bit, quite a bit of traffic, I think we had about forty or so folks come through. And I think Mr. Garcia with the bus department was the winner, he was able to secure a few uh some substitute bus drivers. A couple of span, we had a couple of folks who had been with the district in the past and possibly could be returning. So uh much to our delight, it was more uh much more attended than meeting we thought, so we kinda excited that we did to get that done, so riding with five or so bus drivers and uh two or three um E As, A D camps, those type of positions and one or two teachers, and again our focus was on on the support staff, so it was uh well attended. Also, would like to thank Los Llanos Middle School custodians and all those who kinda supported and really uh come together and put it together in a short amount of time, so I'm excited about that. Also, coming up this come Tuesday, July fir- first, as she's Mr. Seis shared, here in the boardroom from uh ten to two. So we have special education staff, special education teachers, as well as uh E As. And then from four to six, we'll come back into the boardroom and our focus will be on athletic coaches. Um have actually have a few head coaching positions open, as well as some assistant coaches. So we are working hard to um make sure that we got hard hard people in the buildings as as we say, so.
Yeah. Awesome, so how are we, how are we doing on bus drivers, I know that seems to be a little bit of a bottleneck.
I I really think he's pretty close to it to be full.
Really?
Is that, I I don't wanna miss, but I
So we're now looking for substitute bus driver?
Yeah. So
And is this pre-covid numbers or are we back up to having enough drivers, because I know that's been
They're getting close-ish, we're approaching. It's getting close.
Yeah, I know, please forgive me, I absolutely don't wanna misspeak.
That's awesome, that is awesome, great, thank you, thank you for all of your hard work.
Uh yes, sir, then I'd like to, you know, I would like to thank Mr. Seis and uh for uh providing this opportunity. I tell him every time I have some work to do, I was like, but I will be at Valencia High School coming in the fall. Thank you so.
Oh, I don't know about that. Thank you very, very much for the report, thanks for being so spontaneous, we appreciate it. This item was for informational purposes only, no action is needed or warranted at this time, we are now on to item I, board commendations. Mr. Vickers?
I don't have.
Mr. Bennett?
Uh I I just wanna piggyback off what everyone said, pretty much the first responders and the people in the district that helped with the first responders provide them a place to eat, sleep, that's very, very appreciated that we could do that, I thank you, Ms. Chavis, on that. And uh thank you uh for keeping the damage to minimal, could've been a lot worse.
Certainly, you're absolutely correct. Mr. Otero, this is new to you, so you may or may not have some of these on the fly.
That's all, no, I'm gonna pass it.
Okay, Mrs. Simoyah?
Absolutely, uh first of all, I'd like to go ahead and thank Mr. Aragon and uh Mr. Seis for the recruitment efforts, it seems to be working, I know you guys have been doing this year over year. Good positive feedback from members of the community, they thought I was professional, I uh one of the A Es that applied. Uh I think that was real well received by A A D, it was she was kinda nervous about this entering workforce for the first time and she said it was very welcome, so thank you guys for doing that. Um I would like to also thank Mr. Seis for his taking on his role as the interim uh superintendent acting interim for when Miss uh Chavis was on vacation, you did an excellent job running the meeting. Uh and then Ms. Kittredge, uh she's not sitting in the audience, but she did an excellent job when Ms. Wolf was away as well, and I know we can be a handful up here, so. Uh and then my final commendation would probably be in advance, uh thanking them in advance for the extra work. I know the Peralta staff has their boxes and their classrooms all packed up. And I know that they'll be getting assistants moving those boxes into their classrooms. But unlike other teachers that kind of open their boxes, clean their desks and stuff and their classrooms ready to go. They're actually setting up their classrooms for a very first time, that is a lot of work. Um and they're doing it, I believe, on their day off still, there's summer, I'm not sure about that. But uh we can kinda talk, but thank them in advance, because it's as exciting as this to move into a new house, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, pack the coffee cup last, they're saying, okay, so it's right on the top, so those are my commendations.
Thank you very much, I would like to commend the cheerleaders from both Los Llanos High School and Valencia High School, I had so many positive comments. Los Llanos High School was north or um south of the Daniel Fernandez Park, Sunday morning, bright and early. When my husband and I were dropping off some donations and the sponsors were there, some parents were there. They were collecting donations and friendly, polite um group of students, helpful. Uh so I really appreciated seeing them nice and early on a Sunday morning, being helpful. And then I heard brave reviews uh reviews of our Valencia High School cheerleaders. Um they were in a non-air-conditioned building in Peralta assisting families that had evacuated, so whatever they were asked to do. Um one particular constituent who let me know about him said they don't know who the coach is or who the sponsors are, but that is such a um shining star in Valencia County that they wanted me to absolutely know that those young ladies brought um joy in a really bad situation, so I wanted to make sure that that came out. Um I too would like to thank Ms. Kittredge, um she's made arrangements for our retreat tomorrow and has been copying frantically for me. Mrs. Wolf, we always miss you, but Mrs. Kittredge did an exceptional job and she's getting a great job with us for us tomorrow morning. So um and thank you also for the recruitment efforts to make sure that we have high-quality staff in our district and ready to start this. So thank you very much, we are on to item J. This is a report regarding the professional services agreement, the PSA for Laura and Castillo Esquire. Part of the reason that I place this back on the agenda is we had some confusion in the last meeting about the um R F P that we are using to be able to put this PSA in place in terms of its allowed um period of time, there was some confusion about the end date for um the R F P that Ms. Castillo would be working under. Um, period of time. There was some confusion about the end date for, um, the RFP that Ms. Castillo would be working under. And once we had an opportunity for the superintendent's staff to get those, um, details. Uh, clarified and ask some pertinent questions, I wanted to make sure for the public record that this would be a clean reading. So, Mrs. Chavis, I'm going to ask for your report on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rosowski. So, looking at the clarification of that contract reference from the RFP from Clovis. The initial term of the Clovis Public Schools contract is May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. With the option of four additional one-year extensions, not to exceed a total of four years per terms and conditions. Of RFP twenty-four, twenty-five dash two oh five. The reason Clovis Public Schools aligns all contracts with the fiscal year. So what they do is award it for four, the option of four additional one-year extensions, but they have to do that on an annual basis.
Did you read those dates again, Mrs. Seis?
Yes. So the initial term was May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. With the option of four additional one-year extensions and not to exceed a total of four years per terms and conditions of the RFP.
Do we happen to know if Ms. Castillo will receive one of the one-year extensions from Clovis?
She will, and that will be, the renewal may be issued as early as this week and a copy will be sent to Los Unis Schools.
And we, so, cause I think the concern was by the time the PO, um, that we have five days to overwork her. And, um, so then we will have to come back again. I don't, I don't believe that we will need to come back again because we've already approved the PSA, but I just wanted the dates and the clarity for the public record. Are there any questions from the members of the board? Do you have any concerns or questions? Anything that you need answered?
I actually do. We approved to, we approved to use the Clovis contract, but we do not. We, and based upon the dates, it was five twenty-eight, twenty-five through six thirty, twenty-five. I do believe this should come back to the board once they have renewed that actual contract that we can extend her contract.
But it's already been renewed.
It's already been renewed within the body of the RFP, so it had.
It was renewed automatically?
Yes, within the, with the, not automatically. We'll get clarification. Thank you for the question.
Yes. Because, yeah, that, it wasn't confusion, the date really, and I, I appreciate the fact that they're going on to the fiscal year. There were a lot of errors in that RFP that basically I don't think even Clovis caught, but we did in review. And so I'm really nervous on hitching my wagon to something that has a lot of errors in it. I want to make this clean. It's a legal contract. So.
Um, yes, uh, Madam President, members of the school board, Acting Superintendent Chavis. Um, after reviewing all the documents, um, there had been a typo error within the RFP. That had mentioned, uh, July thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Um, that was just a typo within the, the body of the RFP, didn't have anything to do with the actual contract. That was resulted from the conclusion of the RFP. That actual award. Um, went out to Castillo Law for the term of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And the Clovis Schools has responded to my inquiry, um. Citing that the reason that they only had a short term that way is because they aligned all of their contracts for the fiscal year. So they intend to issue a renewal for a one-year contract for the Castillo Law Firm. Um, beginning July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. I'm sorry.
July first.
July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Yes, I apologize for that.
Will we have a copy of that renewal?
Uh, they said that it would be, it would be, uh, issued this week and they did say that they would send me a copy. I, I am not concerned about the, um, fact that we have a, that they had a short term on the initial portion of their contract. Because as long as we issue a PO within the amount, with, when the contract is active. And it's a, you know, we're working off a price agreement here, so it's undetermined amount. Um, our contract can be issued for a year using the terms of that contract. So it's active as long as our PO is in-initiated and issued within that timeframe. Then, um, I believe that we're fine. We do that on other, other things as well. So, um, we have as of this afternoon, everything that we need in order to issue the PO. And it's, um, right now in the process of approval, so most likely by tomorrow at noon, it'll be ready.
Okay, and so you're comfortable with the twelve-month contract per the language of our contract?
Yes. And now it, it would be different if, uh, they canceled their contract. Then that would be another story because then they may have cause for cancellation and then we would have to check into that. But at this moment, the PO, the PO will be based on that, um, active contract with Clovis Schools. And then the renewal will come and I'll be even more satisfied.
Right. Um, and item three, term under the PSA that we did approve, it says this agreement is effective for one year from the date of approval. By the Los Unis Schools Board, no services can begin before a purchase order is issued and received by the contractor. So that's, once we knew that she had been extended automatically by Clovis for the next year following the RFP. And we had already approved for the very short. Plus or minus?
Right.
Um, in there. So, um. I think that this stands. I think that we've met all of the requirements.
Yes, and, um, but once a PO.
On the date was a big one.
Yeah, yeah. And once a PO is, is issued, um, then services can begin and we anticipate that being tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your report, Mrs. Ramon. Is there any other action that needs to occur on item J? So any, or remember discussions, seeking some other action? Cause this was a report regarding the services agreement. So everybody met the information that they've needed. And I'm going to move on to item K. This was on the consent agenda. Uh, it was discussion and approval of resolution number twenty-five dash zero zero three, Los Unis Schools District Foundation. This was tabled at the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting. And then we also removed it from the agenda at the last board meeting. Um, both Mr.'s, Mr. Bennett and I dissented on this particular topic, so it is now, um, up. I will, Mr. Bennett, I will let you start with your motion and then we can go on to discussion.
I guess my motion would be to, uh, not approve this, uh, resolution.
Okay, your motion is to not approve the resolution. Is there a second? I will second. Now we're into discussion. Mr. Bennett, I will let you lead your discussion.
Yeah, my, my concern with the resolution, like it was discussed over a week ago, is it's. I see this foundation as another booster club trying to, and I hope it doesn't, but you know, trying to. If it, I understand it's need to collect the funds for the district. I understand that totally, but at the same time, I'm worried about this foundation trying to control. The school district or the board on where this money goes. And I mean, I know we have to follow Title IX and there's a lot of restrictions there, how we can use this money. And I do know we have a donation policy, I believe, so that's my concern that, you know. And, and, and I know it's just, uh, they gotta do their book, bookwork and all that other stuff, but I'm just real concerned about that. And also concerned of, and how that could affect us through audit. So those are my concerns.
Sir, any other comments or discussion?
And Madam President, yes, Mrs. Simoia, and I sit on the other side of the fence on this one. Because quite frankly, I've sat on several foundations, including the UNM Valencia, uh, Campus Foundation. The NMSU Foundation previously, uh, participated in APS's foundation. Um, these foundations run differently from a booster. Uh, these are like, for lack of a better description, a legalized booster organization with bylaws. Um, basically, they can't start until all the bylaws, until we actually approve the idea of a resolution. Uh, we also can accept significant financial donations from corporations. Without this type of a foundation and even within our own board scholarship to members. Then which we donate our salaries for those scholarships. We cannot continue to do so without this type of a foundation. So I believe that we basically in the past have not. Been participating on a legal playing field with our donations. So that's why I think this foundation is actually necessary. Uh, I do believe that board has participation oversight in every one of the foundations I've sat on. There is board participation and oversight. There are actually formal bylaws that are constructed. Those would be the next steps in this, once we're, once we approve the resolution. So that's my opinion of it.
Um, I'm not sure that we can't be doing our donations. Why would you say that we can't be doing our donations?
Uh, it's, it violates an anti-donation clause, basically.
Yeah, but it's our stipend.
Yep, exactly. You're actually asking for a, to a donation of salary. So, Ms. Tracy, if you have any comment on that.
Madam President, members of the board, um, Acting Superintendent Chavis. So, um, recently I sat at a board meeting and you were discussing your board scholarship. And I have been, um, in the past, very adamant about scholarships should be written out to colleges. And not individually to the students. So I've been fighting with people before because they wanted to. So I thought, okay, I heard how the board wanted to. So I had inquired to our auditors on, would that be a possible? Am I wrong, been wrong, wrong in, in holding that? And the answer to that, uh, went deeper. Um, not should we, not only should not be making scholarships out to, to the students, it needs, you know. Not to the schools, but once any money that comes into us, it follows our rules. So by us giving money for a scholarship, it goes against the anti-donation clause. So actually, this year, we had already been in the process and collected that. And the plan was for it prior to my finding out that this is something that we've been doing for years. And something that our auditor said we should not be doing. So come this next fiscal year, I would not be comfortable accepting any donations. That will be going towards scholarships. So all of those scholarships that we receive. Um, I would not be comfortable issuing those out because of the anti-donation clause.
And that's inclusive of anonymous donors as well, correct?
Pardon me?
That's inclusive of anonymous donors that would like to donate scholarship funds to Los Unis Schools.
Now that comes in once in, and really I should have put two and two together on this. When this happened before, when Meta wanted us to have those garden containers. And then we, you know, they said, you know, we've seen this company. Um, we don't, we don't like the one that didn't come out very good. And this one comes, you know, we think you should buy this. We would like to give you the money for it. Um, then we found out that it was over an amount that we needed to, um, get some quotes on it. Well, it was hard for us to find anything more than the two companies that even made it. So we weren't able to do that. And, you know, once, so, you know, we talked to our auditor about that. And that, and they let us know that, you know, I'm sorry, but you have to follow the procurement rules. Because once that money comes to us, it follows all the rules that we have as a district. So procurement-wise, we were not able to purchase those. So we needed to, um, return those funds and luckily someone else was able to, um, to get those for us. But, uh, you know, something like that could happen again that we don't have to. So this would be some ways for, um, you know, for a, yeah, um, money to be, um, donated. And to go to scholarships, cause they don't have the same, the foundation does not have the same rules that we do. So I would be stopping your board scholarship.
So, thank you, Mrs. Tracy. Any questions for Mrs. Tracy?
Uh, yeah, like you said, stopping the board scholarship, I mean, it's, I mean, something we knew about. Why we've been doing it, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't understand that, cause, uh, it's been a process going on for years.
It has, it has. And now, it's one of those things that once you know you've been, once you find out you've made a mistake. I, yeah, I, yeah. And with, and this year's scholarships, everything was in, in the works. Had happened prior to our finding this out.
So then what would be the process taking what we donate to be able to give out scholarships? Is that going to get, put into that foundation or?
Correct. Um, that, well, I don't know how exactly that's, would work yet, to be honest with you. For the, what, how we would do, like your funds on that. So.
If I may, the contributors basically into the foundation can establish their scholarships. So for instance, the board can establish a scholarship, our cri- our, our criteria. And the money is done, is given to the foundation. The foundation then awards on our behalf for those. Um, and.
Based on your. So I was thinking it would be more like, um, you know, and I have a direct deposit and I ask to have my money put into my bank account. So maybe, um, your direct deposits, you could ask for it to be put into the bank account of that foundation. And then they could, so, um, so that's how I believe it would work for, for yours. Otherwise, um, if someone wanted to, um, donate, they would donate directly to the foundation. But the, being that this is a payroll, I think the best be, would be since the payroll is going to you, that is your money. That you choose, you could then take a portion and have it, um, direct deposited into the foundation.
An example that, uh, my husband and I have, uh, three, uh, named scholarships through UNM VC Foundation. We set a criteria, um, one in particular is a non-traditional student returning for the first time. My husband and I are both non-traditional students. We, my husband went military, I was working. So we lost our, our high school scholarships right off the bat. So it was very important for my husband and I to say, we'd like our, our scholarship money to go to a, what we call a non-traditional student. Someone returning that doesn't qualify for, like I said, the lottery scholarship. And so that is when the guideline is within my own scholarship or UNM Foundation. So you can set your guidelines accordingly and the foundation actually works with each one of the, uh, contributors. As to how you would like that. So it's, it's kind of like a legal clearinghouse for these funds.
So, Mr. Bennett, I'm wondering, thank you, Mrs. Simoia. I'm wondering if, if you look at the resolution on the fourth whereas. Could it be this wording? It says the Los Unis Schools Board of Education understands that Los Unis Schools would work with such a foundation. Would it make you more comfortable if we, and if we replaced that phrase, work with? To say that, um, the Los Unis Schools Board of Education understand that Los Unis Schools, um. Okay, I just stopped bawling this and it's going to be really rough and I apologize. Maybe that we have oversight? As opposed to working with, yes.
Sure.
And I give you some input regarding that.
Absolutely.
So the last paragraph of the resolution is basically a guardrail. Be it further resolved by the Los Unis Schools Board of Education. That we, the sitting members of the Los Unis Schools Board of Education, do hereby retain all authority. vested in the board to evaluate a potential foundation's structure, membership and mission. And then, when appropriate, enter into necessary agreements to ensure maximum support of Los Unis School. Its students and staff. It seems to me that that is. Uh, a very good guardrail that, you know, nothing's going to go forward. In, until we approve it, edge to structure and all of that. And we're not jumping into just creating this thing with no oversight at all. We will have oversight. So I don't know that we have to change that whereas really.
Um, so I think, thank you for pointing that out. And I think when it would come down to the, be it further resolved, because I haven't gotten there yet, but thank you for getting us there. Um, where it says, do hereby retain all authority vested in the board to not evaluate a potential. But again, to approve. Evaluating and approving, evaluating and, um, controlling. I mean, there's, those are different things, right? We can, we can evaluate all day long, but a foundation, we're not saying that a foundation still. I mean, there's, those are different things, right? We can, we can evaluate all day long, but a foundation, we're not saying that a foundation still is. And, and I don't know, Mr. Bennett, I may be putting words in your mouth. Would it make you more comfortable if we were clear on the board's oversight role and that at, at any point the board could say, you know what, this isn't working for us. We want it done and over, close it, close shop?
Yeah. And I think that that's probably something we need to put in there if we're not satisfied to shut it down. I mean, cause like you're right. To evaluate is one thing, but to have an actual part of making the decision, it's a whole different thing.
Well, the, uh, last sentence of that is, or last half of sentence, enter into necessary agreements. So there's our, there's our stop there.
Correct.
If we decide not to enter into agreement, then that ends it until we can come to an agreement. So.
And this is a resolution. It's not an MOU. It's not a charter for a foundation. It is the ability to evaluate a potential foundation structure. So this is still at that point where we're at a resolution. We have not moved into MOU, which would be very much within the Board of Education's authority that they would, that you all would approve.
So in other words, we do have to stop on the MOU. And for some reason, we create it, there's language in there, we're not happy, we do not have to approve the MOU, it doesn't.
The other, uh, thing I, I do want to point out, Mrs. Simoia pointed out is that uh, we are missing out on donations from corporations, et cetera, who uh, require those donations to be made to a five oh one C three entity. And even if they want to help support the schools, they can't without that structured in place. So, uh, we're leaving a lot of money on the table.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I know, I definitely understand that. I think though I'm hearing Mr. Bennett's concern. And, and I'm wondering if we could change some language so that he is comfortable. Um. Do you have clarity in language that you want to add, Mr. Bennett? Cause I've been adding language for you and that's not fair.
Yeah, not at this time. Like you said, it's just, uh, something that I'm, I just don't have a comfortable feeling with. So I'll just go with that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
Well, the only part I, I see part of that last sentence, it says when appropriate of entering necessary agreements. So, um, what I'm thinking is when appropriate, enter or or the right word would be to, um, enter necessary agreements or rescind necessary agreements.
How about that could be a really good solution, Mr. Otero. How would you feel about? So let me read it. Um, I'm going to read just the second half. Do hereby retain all authority vested in the board to evaluate a potential foundation's structure, membership and mission. And then when appropriate, enter into or rescind from.
Yes.
Yes. I believe that does still provide you all with the authority. And that's why this is the first step to even start a foundation and discuss it.
Would that make you more comfortable, Mr. Bennett? That would make you more comfortable. Good suggestion, Mr. Otero. Thank you very much. How, Mrs. Simoia, Mr. Vickers, how would you feel about those two words being added on that last line?
I don't have any problem. Um, who wrote this?
Mr. Zamora. Correct, correct, correct.
It would have been nice to have him.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, he was heard a previous one and we, I don't, I think that we were kind of still wrapping our head around what a foundation would look like as opposed to getting into the weeds. Which he has commented many times that we like to get into the weeds.
Right. And I think he's been involved in these
Yes.
things before. So he's very familiar with the process. So I don't mind with adding the wording.
Enter into or send, enter into or rescind from necessary agreements. So that would be just another, it's not just getting into them, but how do we get out of them? Is that your concern, Mr. Bennett? Is how do we get out of it?
That's a simple wording.
The alpha and the omega. Yeah, that would be pretty good.
We do have a motion on the table.
That's correct.
Deny, uh, to.
Yes, I'm going to move to the motion, but I was asking for further discussion.
Um, just one more comment. Do we happen to have this document in a Word format that that change could be made? So this could be signed?
Yes, yes, we do.
And then we have on the back of it, it does have a past date. Um, so that could be updated to this evening's date for it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Very good details. Thank you, Mrs. Simoia. So the motion on the table is to not approve the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero three. Having no dis- no further discussion, I am going to call for.
Madam President, I would like to go ahead and remove my.
I will remove my second. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five zero zero three? Los Angeles Schools District Foundation.
Madam President.
Mrs. Simoia.
I move we approve of Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero three, Los Angeles Schools District's Foundation. Uh, amended as followed with be it further resolved. The sentence basically to enter, basically evaluate a potential foundation's structure, comma, membership, comma, and mission. And then when appropriate, enter into or rescind from necessary agreements. With the amended language and the amended date up to this evening.
Is there a second? Before seconds? Mr. Otero, I'm going to give you that one. You can have your first second. Any further discussion? I am going to call for the vote. Mrs. Simoia, this is your motion.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Okay. This, we are on item L, discussion and possible decision regarding the board's expectations for the superintendent's participation in community, education and business-related organizations. This is finalizing a detail within the superintendent's employment contract, which begins on July one, twenty twenty-five and concludes June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. I would stand for a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
Uh, per section seven, the working conditions, uh, H one, membership participation. And two, I would move to add an addendum to the contract to include participation with the following entities. Under community and business relationships, monthly participation with the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, monthly participation with the Valencia County Chamber of Commerce, and monthly participation with the Rotary Club. Is that the Las Lunas Rotary Club or how do they call, call themselves?
Is, is, sorry.
Yeah.
It is the, it doesn't quite work like that. They, um, she will be recommended to join it.
Okay.
She won't be a member as yet, just to say I'm going to join. They have to, they will ask her to. So there's a little bit of a caveat up there. They have to ask her. So if she's approved or joined, then she can be part of that.
Participation.
Yeah.
With Rotary events. Under the section regarding education, monthly participation with the UNMVC Joint Superintendent Meeting. Under education and legislation, quarterly meetings, I believe, with the Central Region Superintendent's Association and quarterly meetings with the Superintendent Association Meeting. There's two different ones. One is regional and one is.
The state and that's once a month.
And that's once a month.
The state is once a month.
One, then monthly on state association. And then finally, biannual meetings with government slash community meetings to include the Village of Las Lunas, the Pueblo Azleta, Peralta, Valencia County and Basque Farms.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Is there any discussion? I will, um, clarify for the record that this was a discussion topic in the board's most recent work session that was held immediately preceding this particular meeting. One of the concerns was in a previous work session, the board had listed all sorts of possibilities for Mrs. Chavez to participate in under this particular requirement within her contract. And when listing those, it was pretty clear that that could have been an overwhelming expectation, especially if we also have the expectation that she is regularly at school sites and also seen to the day-to-day administration of the district. So although no decisions were made during the work session, the board did spend quite a bit of time um, talking about the options, uh, seeking input from Mrs. Chavez, uh, clarifying how frequently these would require her to be away from the district. Um, and understanding what participation could look like and how some of these could be varied throughout the year. So for instance, the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, although there is a monthly, um, statement that we would add, Mrs. Chavez made clear for the board that as the, uh, annual Matanza shows up, those meetings can be bi-weekly. And same thing when the scholarship decisions are made. So some of these may have some fluidity and some flexibility, but for the most part, Mrs. Simoia's motion referenced the minimum time that we understand, um, Mrs. Chavez would need to be away from the district. Is there any discussion, any other discussion? I will call for the vote. Mrs. Ote- Mrs. Simoia, this is your motion.
I move yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Yes, Mrs. Wolf. So we're drinking and it was on a five, so we're trying once the purchase for this place and you may use that adjournment. Is it the board's intent that she will give this amendment or how would you like that amendment to be about it?
And I believe it's an addendum. It refers to it as an addendum.
So who wants to do that?
I will write it. And then the board.
I would make a motion to that, that.
She had that in the motion, that there will be an amendment.
Addendum, but I didn't authorize. So you're asking for someone to authorize authority for the writing of the addendum?
Okay.
Um. Madam President?
Yes.
I would move to authorize yourself to survive the addendum, uh, to the contract with the participation, uh, and I do believe that that would require board signature, all board members' signatures on that addendum. Board meetings. Yeah, we gave ourselves, I believe, thirty days to finalize that, correct? So, so long as it's signed before the end of July third, we're good.
No, no, next board meeting, that's a special board meeting and we will have an absence. So we will have the one in the regular board meeting scheduled for July. Okay, I'm going to second that motion. Is there any discussion? I will call for the vote. Mrs. Simoia, this is yours.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Wolf. Uh, items M and N were removed at the beginning of the meeting. O was consent. We are now to item P, which is new or business, new business. Get there. At this time, I will ask if there are any board member requests for topics to be discussed on upcoming work sessions and or regular or special meetings. Members of the board, do you have any topics?
Um, Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
Per the presentation today, uh, just the opportunity for a, uh, board tour of the Peralta facilities.
Any other board member have any other particular topics they would like to see on a work session, special or regular meeting? I'm looking back at our work session little list. I've got a list going. So I do know, Mrs. Simoia, you had talked about, uh, this was in February, because I'm trying to wrap up this year's business. We had talked about, uh, wellness and wellbeing. So presentation at a work session. So I thought I would schedule that for August.
That might be a really good opportunity. If we could have a work session on employee wellbeing, um, what is provided by NSEA? If there are any services, et cetera, um, just so that, uh, our employees are, are know as they're starting the school year that we are, we've got their back.
Right. So just looking through our list.
Thank you for the reminder.
You betcha. Um, I know that we had also talked about, and this came up again in our last law conference. The available, when we have online, uh, when we have constituents watching the board member online and they wish to present a public comment, we need to address that topic. So I think I want to see that one come back up for August. I'm holding off on July, giving the board a little bit of a break and maybe, um, cabinet as well as we are starting the school year.
So just for clarification, it would be a mechanism to have an online comment via Zoom. So they can zoom in and provide that information.
Correct. Yeah. Cause that's, that's a requirement that we do have to have by law and it hasn't been addressed. So that would be good.
So if we already have that mechanism?
I think just.
Just to share that, how to do that and how to access.
Yeah, a work session so that we all understand it and then maybe some sort of clarification about, um, how the public could access it. You know, so it's, it's clear.
Instructional.
Right.
Purposes.
Right. Thanks very much. Mr. Vickers, are you wanting more information on title nine? Cause at one point in time, you had talked about it being, um, a comprehensive audit with equipment and money and whatnot. Do you want it to be more than what we've been presented or are you satisfied?
What we got tonight, I think is, is good.
Okay. So you're satisfied with it? I can take that off of our list?
Yeah.
I can check it out that we actually completed something. Okay, I'm still looking through my list. I know we had talked about, or Mrs. Simoia, this was one of yours in December. You wanted more information about UNMVC liaison and student opportunities.
I think now that we have a, we will have a superintendent in place on July first, based on her contract and the arrangement that we made today, addening, would be denim to her contract. Um, during her report outs on the regular board meetings, perhaps we can get updates on what's going on with that. And I think that would satisfy. If we find anything further that we need, we can go ahead and address that, but we can mark that one off as well.
Okay, so that would be a regular report during meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. I know one of the topics, Mr. Otero's predecessor, Mr. Tally brought up, was safety on campuses. And as I spent a little bit of time with him, again, to make a regular report. Um, to take that off of our to-do list. I know Mr. Tally had also raised in December, um, an inclusion of more information about sped topics. I know we talked about, we, we've, we've done the playground equipment. The board has addressed those kinds of needs. But Mr. Tally had mentioned that we just need better information about, um, all things special education to make sure that the board is A knowledgeable. And then I attended a wonderful ceremony in May and definitely wanted, um, that particular group to come back and show us what they do. What was it? Over four hundred?
Yes.
Visits that our students, um, help me with the acronym.
Launched to success.
Launched to success in May, over four hundred that a group of students and their staff did around the community. So I asked for them to come in in August and I'll do that in an August work session. Um, we also talked about a feasibility study on additional languages. I think I'll bring that up. Um, we also talked about a feasibility study on additional languages, I think I'll bring that up at a different time. Um, and then, working towards building up our fine arts program. But we can talk about that a little bit more and flesh out those kinds of topics, but those, I've got my to-do list. I think I've got our to-do list, like, we've all checked off, we've done good work. Is there anything else, Mr. Otero, you're new to the board, as you were anxiously awaiting for your swearing in? Did you have anything that you were just wanting to see us get to work on, address?
No, I, I, you know, I just wanna take it a day at a time and see, but, kind of what's been going on. Uh, but, you know, it seems like there's been an awful lot of good work going on.
Okay.
You know, give us some time and you should all think of something.
Well, we'll see about that. Absolutely, look forward to your, look forward to your input. This information was for the purposes of gathering input, no action is needed at this time, we're on to item Q, the announcement of meetings. This brings us to the announcement of meetings, as allowed by the Open Meetings Act and the District Open Meetings Resolution. On occasion, a quorum of the school board members attend the same function, including school and district celebrations and ceremonies, as well as sports functions, conferences, workshops. Trainings and community events. Board members will refrain from discussing and interacting on Los Lunes Schools Board of Education issues in those settings. In addition, only official meetings are published and if other meetings are scheduled, they will be announced in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. With that being said, I would like to announce the following meetings. Tomorrow, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, this will be a board superintendent's summer retreat. Which will be held at the U N M Valencia Workforce Training Center at ten twenty, Hunning Ranch East Loop in Los Lunas, New Mexico. The topics are listed on the notice, a forum will be in attendance, that will begin at eight o'clock. Additionally, tomorrow and June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the board and the superintendent will be participating in the summer graduation. Which will be held at Los Lunas High School in the auditorium. And that occurs at eleven o'clock?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, um, again, a forum will be in attendance. Then on July eight, twenty twenty-five, there will be a special board meeting. The agenda will be forthcoming and those topics will be listed, this will be held in the central office conference room and it will begin at six o'clock P M. On July fifteen, twenty twenty-five, the audit committee meeting will commence. Uh, the attendance is by invitation only, I will be standing in for Mr. Vickers. This will be at the central office conference room, beginning at three thirty P M. On July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the finance committee meeting will be held at the central office conference room and that will begin at four o'clock P M. And then on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, will be a regular board meeting in the central office boardroom and that will begin at six o'clock P M. I will not schedule a work session for the month of July, there's my gift to one and all. So take it as a gift, it's my brand new gift to all of you.
What time was the meeting on, the special meeting on July?
Six o'clock. This brings us to item R, adjournment, I would stand for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Simoia. Mr. Bennett has moved and Mrs. Simoia has seconded to adjourn the meeting, I will call for the vote, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes five zero, thank you very much, and, and the motion is adjourned at seven twenty-five P M. Thank you for everybody who participated in the conversation.